Jackie?
I.
Tiana says I. Minutes approved? The enrollment report. Here we go.
Thanks, Michelle. So overall, you can't see the whole thing. Can you get?
No, not all.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just try to go over the numbers. So overall, the district enrollment is down sixty-three students from the adopted budget. Veneta Elementary is down thirty-three. Elmira High School is down twenty-two. Fernridge Middle School is down nineteen. And Elmira Elementary is actually up by eleven. So for the total difference of sixty-three students, we're at thirteen-twenty-five. We were supposed to be at thirteen-eighty-eight this year. You know, the numbers do keep fluctuating, so we'll just keep a close eye on it. And let's see, I don't think there's anything else I wanted to point out about it. Gary, did you have anything to say regarding enrollment?
Nope.
Okay.
All right, and that does not need board action.
It does not. Yeah, just if you guys have any questions on it to ask. Yeah.
Thank you, Quana. I think that you're also up for the financial report.
Yeah, I am. So still not a lot going on this year, being only September thirtieth. We've received twenty-three percent of our revenues, which is where we were projected to be. So that's good. We've spent twelve percent of our operating expenditures, and again, that's standard for this time of year as well. But nothing too odd has happened this year. We should start receiving our tax payments next month, so the revenues will start going up quite a bit at that point. And then I will mention, we're still going through the audit. It's kind of an odd year because it's all via Zoom and just uploads, so it's taking a lot longer than normal. But once that is finalized, you'll see the transfers on there as well. I just don't do those until the auditors have finally approved last year's final numbers. So that might happen next month as well.
Okay. Any questions? I would entertain a motion to approve that.
I move that we approve the September thirtieth, twenty-twenty financial report.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I call a vote. All in favor? Mark? Andrea?
I.
Jackie?
I.
Tiana says I. Motion passes four to zero. General obligation bond refinance. Gary, tell us how much money we're going to be saving taxpayers.
Okay, so to summarize, it's been a several-month process, but the district sold bonds to refinance our outstanding GO bonds, general obligation bonds, from two thousand fourteen. The sale took place on October seventh, and it went exceptionally well. Overall, we locked in a current present value dollar savings of around one-point-three million dollars for the taxpayers and over one-point-five-seven million over the remaining duration of the bonds by lock, essentially locking in a new rate at two-point-two-seven a percent, which is in contrast to the average coupon borrowing rate of around five percent on the bonds that we refinanced. The bonds were extremely popular on the buyers. In fact, as we were sitting there that morning watching the sale and orders come in, we had, we were selling twenty-two million dollars in bonds. We had a hundred-and-twenty-three million worth of orders wanting to purchase them. As a result, our underwriter, who is Piper Sandler, you've had, we've had Carol here before speaking to us. They were able to reduce the interest rates even a little bit further from the original offering levels when we posted them. The high demand among investors was in large part due to our district's strong credit rating. We're a level A-one from Moody's Investor Service. And in their rating write-up, Moody's specifically cited the district's improved financial position. The refinancing positions us well in the years to come. Our rates over the next couple of years will actually rise a little bit to two dollars and nineteen cents, which is the rate we projected when we passed the bond in two thousand fourteen. That's what it was promoted as, is hey, going back to two thousand, our kind of average rate has been two-nineteen. If we pass this bond, we're going to keep it at two-nineteen. Since two thousand fourteen, it's slowly dropped the rate due to multiple factors. One of them, one of the largest factors being increase in property values. So for the next three years, it'll be right at two-nineteen. And then after that, from twenty-five, twenty-six through the end of the bond and thirty-six, it will drop down to around a buck sixty, which will again be a big savings for our taxpayers out here and also for the district, the ability, if voters want to, to pass another bond, since we'll have kind of that, that capacity between two-twenty, which has been our traditional rate, and the dollar sixty that it will be. So all in all, a significant amount of savings for the taxpayers. It closes, the bonds will close on October twenty-first. Once that happens, it's essentially a done deal now, but all the final closing documents will be signed on the twenty-first, and then we'll be official. So any questions on any of that? Quana, anything I left out?
No, that all sounded great.
So not a question, but just a comment. Back in two thousand fourteen, when we sold the bonds, we actually brought in more money than the bonds were actually worth because, again, they were very popular and so we were, we were able to cover the additional costs that other districts were not necessarily able to cover and
Yeah, I don't remember the exact amount, but it was, it was a significant amount. It was like over a million dollars.
I think it was like one-point-five. I mean, it was, it was definitely, and I, I just, I, I appreciate your you know, Quana and previous budget managers and your guidance in terms of definitely keeping a very close eye on our finances and being a steward of the taxpayers.
Yeah, this is a big savings, and I guess the only other thing I'd mention is, you know, we went through this long-range facility planning process in the spring with a group of about twenty people, about ten district people and ten community members. As a result of going through that, if the district were to pass a bond in the next five years, the state is giving us four million dollars. So let's say in twenty-twenty-six, we pass a ten-million-dollar bond, we'll actually get fourteen million dollars, so four million free from the state as a part of what's called the Awesome Grant, O-S-C-I-M grant. So it's something to look forward to down the road.
Well, thank you and Quana both for all your work on that. I know just a ridiculous amount of work went into getting ready for the one meeting that I sat in on, and I know there were many more before that, so we appreciate it. I think you're still up, Gary.
Yeah, superintendent's report, just have a couple items to quickly touch on. One, Lane County Public Health asked us if we wanted to hold a voluntary testing clinic out here this last Saturday. It happened at Veneta Elementary from ten to two on Saturday. I'm not sure exactly how many people they visit, visited and got tested, but at one-thirty, I heard it was just over sixty. So, you know, definitely wasn't two-hundred, but sixty free tests to our community. Hopefully got them some information and it went well. Community partnerships, I emailed you that document today. Just wanted to follow up that listed, you know, some of the community partnerships that are happening with our schools and different organizations in the community. We'll continue. I think that's something I'll kind of keep updated. Andrea pointed out a couple discrepancies. We'll be talking about it in our next admin meeting to get that tightened up, but just wanted to make sure you saw that. And then a board goal. So we, again, going back to the retreat where we set our board goals. Michelle, can you share that Google Doc? You have that ready? Yeah, so actually, now this is probably, can you guys even see that very well? No. So what I'm probably going to do, I'm going to email you this tomorrow in a Word document. But no, it essentially, now we've had some time, all the administrators have gone through it. Remember our board, our goals around engaging constituents. So we have a long list of things that are occurring in the building. And again, I won't bore you with the details here, but I'll send that to you tomorrow. I might even post it on the district website so that anyone can see it. That might be a little bit better. I'll, I'll edit it cleanly. Targeted goal number two, we scroll down, Michelle. Sorry, support services. So you know, all the different things we have going on in buildings, whether it's title support. Go ahead and scroll down a little bit more. Just going to kind of read a few of these things. Family resource support. We've added counselors at the elementary and another counselor at the high school. Behavior specialist in our breeding, in our building. Smart reading, which is going to pick up again in January. Just all the different things occurring on in the building. And then our, our third goal around equity. Let's see, so some of the things that are listed in here, we have PDs planned throughout the year. Our first, other than the one we had in August, our next one is November third. We're working with Lane ESD with some pros there. We have a district equity team. We continue to support unified basketball. Anyway, I'll get this document posted and emailed to you in Word, so you can look it over a little closer, but just essentially outlines some of the many strategies that the district will engage in over the course of the next year to help us make progress towards these benchmarks, towards these goals we've identified that are important to us. So that's all I have as far as superintendent's report.
It tells me now if I am talking and I'm muted. That's a handy feature. Moving on to discussion items. Thank you, Gary. We have budget committee applicants?
So we have two that would require board approval and then board action. Tori Macklin has reached out and agreed to serve another term if the board would like. And then we had a new application from David Volz. So David would be in to position five, and Tori would be re-elected into position three.
What is required here? Do we vote on them individually or together?
They can go into one motion. So again, Tori Macklin is position three. David Volz is position five. It could go into one motion with everyone voting.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the applicants for position three and position five for the budget committee.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, I call a vote. All in favor? Mark?
I.
Andrea?
I.
Jackie?
I.
Tiana says I. Motion passes or carries four to zero? Future board meeting format, virtual or in-person?
Can I go back to the
Yes, please go back to the
committee application. Just had a quick note from Quana. Typically, this month, we would adopt our budget calendar, but applicants, we wanted to wait, so that will be on the November board meeting for you to look at the calendar for those budget committee meetings, and we'll make sure that these new members are looped into that.
Okay, super. Thank you, Michelle. Thanks, Quana, for pointing that out. So future board meeting formats, virtual or in-person? Anybody have any thoughts, one way or the other?
I personally like to just see us go virtual until at least after the first of the year.
Okay.
Jackie, are you comfortable with that?
Well, I was kind of hoping we would have an option to be in person if we wanted it. I don't know what other people's thoughts are on that. I mean, we could do both pretty easily.
Yeah, we've done that before. They've done it for me for, what, eighteen months now?
Although would it, would it be more difficult for, for more than one person to be, to be virtual?
I can tell you that zooming in to a, zooming in virtually to a live meeting is a little bit horrendous. Michelle and Gary and I have to go and do all kinds of tech checks before, and I can hear them okay in the empty room, but when there's people in and they're moving around, making all those noises, or any kind of conversation that happens back and forth, I miss out on a lot of that. And so I would be more on the side of, of Mark and just say, can we keep them virtual through the end of, of the calendar year and revisit, you know, look at the case counts, see kind of what's happening at that point. But that's, you know, it's, it's easier for me to participate more fully this way, and that we shouldn't be making a decision based on one person alone, but that would be my thought. Also, the other thought that I have is that it, the virtual format keeps things, I guess, a little bit more accessible for anyone who wants to you know, call in and watch the fun-filled work of a board meeting.
Well, that is, that's actually very true, because right now, we have twenty-four people.
Right, and we would not be able to fit them.
And there is, and there, very rarely do we ever have more than the administrators in the audience. And so I was thinking about the fact that this is actually more accessible for at least some people.
Well, and it's more accessible for the number of people that want to, seem to want to attend our board meetings right now. I don't know that we have a space where we could do that. Certainly not a space where anyone zooming in would also be able to hear it. I think that's the other, the other piece is just trying to figure out that if we're not, you know, we can't pass a microphone because of COVID. It doesn't really make sense to have people come to a podium to speak so that their voice can be captured. The owl is, is made, I think, more for smaller around-the-table meetings. Like, for me, it worked okay during bargaining, because there were like four people, only one person talked at a time, you know, and everybody knew that I was there, but when, again, when we get more people in that room, it's just harder. Oh, Angela Donahue has the hand raised. I don't know how to invite her to unmute. Michelle, can you do that?
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, now I can.
Yes. I just have a question. If you want to keep them virtual and, which I do agree, it makes it more accessible and, and public facing, or public facing for these meetings, can you allow either the chat to be utilized or allow us to unmute?
Um, what I would say is that we're trying to run it the way that we run in-person board meetings, and in an in-person board meeting, we wouldn't even necessarily be taking your question at this point, because the board meeting is designed to be our work session. This is when we get together and when we make these decisions and approvals that have to happen every month. And so in an in-person board meeting, the only time that the public is allowed to comment is during that public comment time. I know because I got in trouble for it at my first board meeting. And I'm, and I may be in violation right now, but I, I'm an educator, so I'm like, hey, someone's got a hand up. So that would be like, that's not something that's going to change because it's not the format and the way that we do that. If that, you know, that makes sense, like public comment is
No, that's okay. Yeah.
Okay. Um, all right, there's a galaxy seven, but I'm not, Mark, I'm going to ask you, what am I supposed to be doing here?
Well, since you, since you allowed Angela to
Yeah.
speak, then it looks like there are two people, two participants
If Angela lowers her hand, then I think we only have
Hold on. Oh, oh.
Can I lower my hand? Oh, yep, I can. Okay.
So the Galaxy S seven, I don't know who that is.
Hi, I apologize. It took me a while to get Zoom downloaded because it got deleted off my phone. Um, I guess my problem, when you say that the meeting numbers are up, the numbers are obviously up for what's going on in the school district. There's obviously a lot of us that are very interested in what's happening and don't agree with it. So to sound like the numbers are spontaneously up, your school board members that were voted in, and we have a right to speak up until this, and like I said, my Zoom wasn't working, but we're going through business, we should be able to sit down with our school board and come to good things. We should be able to get input. Like he was saying, this isn't loading, that's not loading, let's first, second, and third that and be on our way. We have some things in our school district right now that aren't, let's first, second, and be on our way. There's some things that need to be addressed in the way the children, the teachers, the staff, and the parents are being treated. And as school board members, for you to say we shouldn't be meeting till after the first of the year is one-hundred percent not showing up to do your job. You're doing the job of your, our, your community, us, us. You're doing the job of us. You're, you're speaking for us. So you need to meet with us and see what it is you're speaking on behalf of.
I appreciate your comment. I'm just telling you the way that our board meetings have always run, and so if we were in person, the time for you to meet with us would be during that public comment time, not a conversation back and forth when we're going through the business. That's just not the way that this has happened. And I'm, you know, this is my third full year in the school board. There are other members that have been here for longer. And as I said, based on how this typically runs, if we were in person and somebody raised their hand, we don't call on you. We continue to, to do the business because that's what this meeting is designed to do. I've received a number of emails. You know, we're, we're not unaware of what's going on or, or how unhappy many parents in our district are. So I, I appreciate what you're saying. I understand that you feel that way. But, you know, it's, it's not an appropriate time for us to be having a conversation right now, and I'm not sure now, like, how to move forward. So
I think that that we should take the, take the, the comments into consideration, but at this point, I if Jackie really, really wants to have the option of people of a mixed I can't think
Like a half in-person, half virtual, right?
Yeah. We could start like tomorrow, trying to figure out the technology that would allow that. But I also feel like both Gary and Michelle's time could be better spent on other things and you know, I
I'm, I'm not totally against doing it in person. I just feel that I mean, I just suggested we do it to the, you know, not do it until January, but continue to meet like this. So I'm not totally against it, but just to real, just as long as people realize that when they do come to a public meeting, they're only going to be allowed to speak for a number of minutes, and, and you're not necessarily going to be able to have a conversation, like Tiana said, with the board. It's not a time for that. It's time for public comment. It's, and we hear what you're saying, and things will be worked on depending on what the requests are. But there's certain rules that you have to follow during that public comment, and that's just, then that's public meeting law. I mean, that's just the way it is. It's, it's not necessarily our choice. So, but like I said, I'm not totally against it.
I, I would tend to since I've thought, I hadn't thought about the fact that Tiana, when you were virtual and the rest of us were in person, the fact that there were so many technical issues and also had not thought about the fact that Michelle and Gary really have better things to do than to think about how to get us in person, whereas it's so sorry, I would, I would agree with Mark that we should just do the November and December meetings as virtual and then decide once the new year comes around.
Um, so Jackie, do you have thoughts that you want to share?
Sorry, my computer's being really kind of nasty to me tonight. I sort of lost all of you for a moment, but I got the, I, I, all the visual went away. I, you know, I am always wanting to get back to normal. And I'm also very virus-conscious. You know, I have someone in my house that had heart surgery recently, and so I have to be careful. And I know that there's logistics associated around having people come into our board meetings, and I also know that there's laws that govern that, how we have those meetings. I've been around these board meetings a long, long time, when Andrea called me a PhD one time, and I said, yeah, you can call me that anytime.
Oh, don't.
You probably don't even remember that. I do.
I, I do. I also remember another time when anyway. Yeah, please go ahead, Jackie.
Yeah, yeah, and it's okay, Andrea, if you still want to call me doctor. So I, I would like to move to, you know, having an option to meet in person, and then when the public wants to come and speak, we'll have to figure out the logistics in how to do that and how to regulate it, because there's, it's going to be some work for sure, and we could put the time and energy into that to make it work. We don't have to like blast into it right away when there's like all these other things going on. But I would like to move to that, at least have that option. That's I get more, me personally, I get more out of a meeting when I'm not yelling at my dog when I'm muted and trying to figure, get my computer screen to be consistent. So if we like try to move towards that by January, I would be happy to do that. And then I'm sure that our constituents will abide by. If we have to have two people in the boardroom and they go out, that's, you know, that's the way it, it needs to be. But you, you know, we're all conscious about the virus and everything else that's going on. It'll be flu season shortly. I'm looking forward to that personally. So we, you know, we'll make it work. We don't have to jump into it, but let's start moving towards a more normal. That's what I think.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think that was, I think that's what, that's not different than what Mark and I are proposing. You know, it's But you know, who knows what will be happening in January. It's been a really. Rocky time, so.
Well, I, I'll tell you, in July, I went to Alaska and. I wasn't, you know, everybody, the CDC saying, you know, things had changed and da, 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 and then it went, the rates went way back up again. So, um. I'm hoping that we continue to have go down and we can start bringing in more normal kind of thing. So anyway, we'll bring it back up in, uh, will we bring it back up in December or will we bring it back up in January? Are we shooting to try to do something different in January or in, what are we looking at?
I will, um, I will talk with Gary and Michelle and maybe our tech director and find out if there are any better plans for those of us that can't meet physically yet. Um, and we'll give an update in November for what we're thinking. Might happen in December or January, if that makes, uh, if that makes sense to the board members. Michelle, if you could put that on the. Radar or, you know, put it on the agenda.
Well, thanks for hearing me out on this. And we'll make it work.
Oh, I, I want things to get back to normal. As well, that, you know, my, my reality is. Different than most people's, and so I try to think about what most people need as opposed to what I need. And then, once we know what most people need, then how can we accommodate? Us. Within that, so I, you know, I'm, I'm. I'm all for getting back to normal, 100%. I just don't know how to get there from here.
Yeah. And Jackie, I had actually. Decided that. If you wanted to be in person, that I, I would be in person too, so that you weren't the only board member there. But then. I. Am backtracking on that to January because of the issues that were raised by Mark and Tiana.
Well, I think, you know, I think it's a, it's a compromise. Um, I think that, um, the, the, the parents. Some of the parents, um, want us in person and, um. You know, a lot of people don't even pay attention to these meetings. And I think that as we move forward, we can be steady and safe and, and make it work. So hearing that people want us to be, you know, more in person and we're going to have to do it in an orderly fashion. I think that's a good compromise and shooting for the next couple of months. That's great.
Okay.
At this same time, although Galaxy S seven. Indicated that. The number of participants are because of the, uh, people who are unhappy with the district. I don't really care what the reason is. There are 24 participants who would, may not have. Participated before and I am. I'm happy to have them. Here, so.
Actually, I think it's a, it's a, it's a great thing that people, um, want to participate and want us to hear their voices. I think that's a great thing.
I do too.
So. Yeah, and there's only a few times since, you know, I've been involved in this district for a long, long time and, where I've seen people want to come to meetings and. And, um, and give their opinion, so, yeah. I mean, this is kind of cool that we're able to do it this way, but as we get more normalized. We can move towards a different format.
All right, well, we'll work on this, on that this month. Um, as we're able and kind of give an update on what we've been able to figure out. Um, in the November meeting and we'll look at either December or January for trying to put that into place.
Okay, thanks.
Um, Michelle Marshall, I think you have an S R three plan review.
Hold on.
So the only thing I'm getting on my, oh, there it is. Okay.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you.
It wouldn't let me. Once I was sharing my screen, so sorry. That was a tough act to follow. I'm ready now. Here we go. Um, hopefully you're seeing an SR three overview document.
Yes.
Okay, so I shared this with you guys as well, and I, I thought we emailed it out to you, but if not, I'll email it to you as well. Um, I created this a few weeks ago just because S R. One, two, and three, the CARES Act, the ARP, um, the federal dollars. There's a lot there and. It's really, we have a lot of misconceptions on what the money can be used for and what we're choosing to use it for and what you're allowed to use it for. So I'll try to go through this pretty quickly. Um, when you guys are bored, there's a district plan guide. And like everything O D E, there's 15, 20 page documents, but then with inside of them, there are links to 75 page documents. So there's a lot of reading there, but you're welcome to do that. Instead of the school reopening blueprints, now we have. A one district reopening plan, so that you can find on our district website. And it just looks like this and it's, again, it's a 15 page document that has all the logistics of everything that we have to follow. So that's one component of the SR three application. Then we've got, um, oh, I went out of my PDF, but that's okay. Then we've got all these different strategies and guidelines that they're kind of putting out for people to consider. Um, big things, it's federal dollars. When it, when it's all said and done, there's about 3.7 million for our district to use over the next three years. So, but we. The guidelines are. Fairly. Limited, not, not limited, but you have to follow a certain path. And then every six months you have to review. And then, um. A lot of it, districts are choosing to be really careful. There's some school districts that are not even using it this next year. Because. The United States Education Department hasn't released all of the data requirements that we're going to have to submit. So that's a little tricky too, but the general overarching outcomes is to support student needs. And whether from the pandemic, whether it's social, emotional, whether it's operating a safe school, whether it's more time and instruction. The other big. Topic is unfinished learning. So at least 20% of these dollars, this 3.7 has to be spent on unfinished learning. And there's a certain guidelines for all of the unfinished learning requirements. Um, ours is about $740,000 for Front Ridge School District that we have to commit that much. We'll probably commit more than 20%, but at least 20%. And then I kind of tried to tie it with O D E. So O D E had to submit a grant to the federal government to get these dollars. So they've done all of their stuff to make it kind of like, okay, we, this is what we said we were doing. Now, when you guys apply, this is what you have to do. And so they're trying really hard to help tie it together and weave it along with the SIA requirements, which is the student investment account. Which is also different, uh, grant dollars. So. We're able to do a lot of that engagement work that we already did qualifies for that. So some of those need surveys that we did. We can utilize that information for what we have to do. When O D E submitted their thing to the United States Department of Education. They had to add migrant students and students who are incarcerated. So those are two different areas that we have to add to our focal groups. Um, let me. Make that a little bigger. Um, so then there's also this focus on education resource strategies, which is really good stuff. You know, they're taking best practices for improving instruction and improving programs. And there's a focus on that. So with that. Uh, this time and attention, that's where we're going to be using our 20%. We know that for a fact that we're going to be able to provide some sort of a summer program through the summer of 24. So that's super exciting because in the past, we've had different types of summer programs. We've had the KITS program for a long time. But this last year, we were able to really expand that. We had a K-12 program. We were able to provide the swim passes. We were able to have visitors come in, credit recovery at the high school. All different types of engagement and art classes through the summer. So that was really fun and we get to build on that for the next four years. We can also hit on these other. Areas empowering adaptable instruction, that's professional development and training, conditions for teachers. Relationships and mental health support, and then family and community partnerships. You can go outside of those topics, but you have to. Like write it up and it has to be pre-approved. So then the last part is some of what our proposed activities are. Um, additional staffing, software and curriculum. Support for covering student fees and dues, after-school programs, expanding that summer program, targeted professional development in the areas of PLCs, equity. Response to intervention, S E L. I just tried to put in a couple of different ones. Stipends and overtime and extra duty hours. We have, so one example of that is, um. We have Schoology K-12. If we were pushed back into C D L, we have one platform that we're using. And we're paying two teachers some extra duty hours so that they can support the implementation of that with teachers now. Student supports and incentives, and then of course P P E stuff. Um, we have to continue with this ongoing engagement. So that part of that's through our monthly Q and A's before the school board meetings. Public input, anytime somebody wants to add that, they can email me directly, they can call me directly. Uh, key communicators are building us the teams. And hopefully we'll get to be doing some more targeted outreach here soon and informational things. So that's SR three in a nutshell. It is due October 20th, so. I've been putting together our integrated planning tool, our narrative responses and our budget document. For all of that.
So Michelle, uh, this is Andrea, I have a question.
Sure.
Um. Do we have any? Incarcerated students that we can provide data on?
We don't, we don't right now. Um, and. So I've, I've kind of been trying to figure out what that looks like, and I think what it looks like actually because. Even if we did have incarcerated youth, they would be in Salem or in Eugene. And so they would be in those districts, so it doesn't really apply to us.
Okay. That's. That's what I was actually asking.
Any other questions or comments?
I have a que, I have a question, Michelle, Ms. Marshall.
Throw it at me, Ms. Earl.
The, uh, the critical communicators or what do you, what are they called?
Key communicators meeting?
Yeah, who's, who's on that team?
Mr. Carpenter is going to answer that question for me. He's got it memorized, I bet.
Yeah, it kind of fluctuates right now. It's, it's, it's mo, from the district side, it's just me. A one board member, uh, currently Mr. Boren. Um, and then I invite our union presidents. Uh, and then it's been as many as 20 different community members. I want to say right now it's around 10. We either. Uh, this year and last year, we, uh, meet virtually. We, the first couple of years I ran it, we met in person. Every month. Now we're meeting virtually every other month and I send them an email update. Uh, in the off months, so right now it's about 10 community members and a few board members. Uh, if you know anybody that's, uh, interested in the community that wants to be a part of the key communicators. It's essentially just a conversation where I share information about. Uh, what's currently happening in the district. And, um, take any questions and keep that group informed. They have a little bit more. Not that I don't respond to every email I get, but the key communicators, you know, I encourage them to reach out at me at any time if. If they're hearing questions that are out there or something they can pass along, so just community members and a few district staff.
So is that like an, uh, ongoing committee or is that a drop-in kind of meeting?
It's, uh, we meet the first, uh, Monday morning. I think maybe it's Tuesday morning, first Tuesday morning of each month.
Okay, but that's a set group, is that, that's.
It's a set group, yeah.
Yeah, okay. And if people had issues that they wanted, the board is a more appropriate vehicle for that than that key communicators. If they couldn't submit something to the key communicators group, if they had issues that they wanted to discuss.
If a, if a community member has an issue they want to discuss, I'm the best person versus the school board.
Okay, gotcha. All right.
Anybody could set up a meeting with me to meet personally, you could call and talk to me on the phone. In the last week, I've met with. Lots of people, talked with lots of people on the phone, had one group meeting out in the parking lot at our picnic table with. Five moms last week, so. You know, any, anyone that wants to talk. Anytime has questions. Certainly they can submit comments to the board. Whether we're meeting in person, uh, you know, within the limits, three minutes, whatever, or now when we're virtually, anybody can bid us. Comment by four o'clock on the day of the board meeting and we'll read it. But anybody can be with, meet with me or talk to me anytime.
Okay, I know that, um, for your monthly Q and A meetings, there haven't been very many people in attendance. Um, outside of, you know, district staff, but usually there's one or two of us board members there. That would be, uh, another place where I would encourage people who want to have, you know, more of a conversation to, to attend.
Yep, and those happen at 5:30 on board meeting nights. There's a link, it's the same link, it's going to be the same link all year long. Um, that's where anybody can fire any question they want at me for 30 minutes.
Um, Michelle, you've done an incredible amount of work on this, um, and I appreciate. Everything that you've been doing towards S R and. Your report and your work and the fact that I know that you know that those links link, linked to 75 page documents because you've read the 75 page documents. Um, I just want to, to, to thank you for that. We appreciate having you in your position.
Thank you. You don't have to thank me though, but I appreciate it.
Oh, yeah, I, I know, I know, like it's your job, you're getting paid for it, you know? And, and the best, the best reward is a job well done and all of that, but, but, uh, but also.
A lot of reading and a lot of material and a lot of like. It's, it's been an interesting shift.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure. Um. Okay, so moving on, we have the Lane Education Service District Transit Dollar Request for 2223. Is this Quana? If you're talking, I can't hear you.
No, this is usually not me.
Yeah, this is me.
I'm sorry. I couldn't hear either of you.
If he wants.
Yeah, so this is just a typical, uh, this is the same thing we do every year. Uh, we withdraw, we use 50%, that'll be the box that we check there and then submit to the E S D. Um, remember, one of the primary ways we spend this money. Is to maintain our behavior classrooms here in the district to support, uh, many students that. You know, six years ago, we would have been sending into Eugene. Springfield to other placements due to us not being able to serve them, so. Uh, no change in this form and the way we've done it, at least in the last five years. Uh, we'll be, uh, checking the box down at the bottom that says, uh, not to exceed 50% of our dollars that we're pulling out.
And tell me about the form that you need this, uh, the board action to be in. It's a movement to approve.
Um, could you read, I don't, I can't read that very well, miss.
I'll make a motion if you want, Tiana.
Thank you.
So I make a motion to approve the Laney S D school transit dollar request for 2223.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call a vote, uh, all in favor, Mark?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
Jackie?
Aye.
Tiana says aye, motion carries four to zero. Uh, next up is the high school course approval.
High school course approval, yeah, so we have, uh.
Turn your mic on, Gary.
Sorry. Typically this is done in the spring and all the craziness of the spring. Uh, we drop the ball. Uh, usually, any member at the high school, uh, we forecast for all kinds of courses. And then based on student interest, develop a, uh. A master schedule. To be implemented in the fall. There's three new courses in our master schedule that we're looking for board approval for this year. Because this is happening a little bit late, one thing that I think Mr. Gardner is on here. That we're going to do and then he'll share with the board. I think even maybe the high school, uh, presentation is in January, so maybe it could be in conjunction with that. Is some feedback from students on these three courses. So I'll just summarize them. I emailed you all the documents. Uh, the first one is Intro to Data Science. It's an 11th and 12th grade class. It's a statistics course. Graduation requirements in Oregon around math are higher than a lot of states. All three credits earned that are required need to occur at the Algebra I level or above. And algebra, when you go, you know, Algebra I, geometry, and then Algebra II. Algebra II is a difficult class, one of the more difficult classes at our high school that's required for graduation. So we've always tried to develop and have other options for that third year of math for students that might not be college bound or. Uh, for whom, uh, math isn't their strongest. uh, for whom, uh, math isn't their strongest. Um, and this is an additional one in that series. So it's, um, it's a basically a statistics class. And it's for 11th and 12th graders. Most of them will be taking this. It's taught by a Mr. Best. Most of them will be taking it as their third math credit. Uh, the second new course is Ethnic Studies. It's a senior only elective class. This is an LCC, uh, uh, course, so kids can earn credit through College Now. Uh, it's taught by Mr. Hart. In 2018, the House of Representatives passed, uh, Bill 2845, creating comprehensive ethnic studies standards for K-12. And, uh, this course meets those standards. Again, you can get four credits through Lane. There's currently nine area high schools in Lane County uh, teaching this course. Again, 12th grade elective course taught by Mr. Hart. And the third new course in our master schedule this year is Intro to Motion Graphics. This is taught by Mr. Monaghan. Ties into, um, something he's offered electives in before around film and film club that he runs. It's a seat, counts as a CTE or elective course. Again, it's College Now. Uh, let's see, it's, it's an elective for all students, ninth through 12th grade. And it offers, uh, essentially film students the ability, uh, to gain, uh, skills in that area. So Intro to Motion Graphics, Ethnic Studies, and Intro to Data Science are the three new courses in this year's master schedule that I'm looking for the board to approve.
Motion to approve the three new courses being offered at EHS, Intro to Data Science, Ethnic Studies, and Intro to Motion Graphics.
I'll second.
You have a motion and a second, any discussion?
I have a question for Gary. Did you, do all those have a college link or just two of them?
Um, I believe all three. Rick, you're on here. Or no, yeah, I think all three.
Okay, that's great.
Mr. Gardner, oh, he probably can unmute. Can you make him so he can unmute? Ms. Smith? For sure, Motion Graphics, for sure. Ethnic Studies.
That's correct. The Motion Graphics and the Ethnic Studies class are both College Now. Uh, the Data Science is, uh, basically what we have to do is demonstrate consistency with offering that course and then we can offer it as an LCC class down the road. So it, um, because it's a new class and because it's one that we haven't offered before, uh, Lane requires us to show some consistency and then once we do, we can offer college credit for it as well.
Great.
Great.
Excellent. So we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? I will call a vote, all in favor, Mark?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
Jackie?
Aye.
Tiana says aye, motion passes four to zero. Oh, wait. Are we? We have a second reading of a policy? IIBGA? Ah, yes. And if I am correct, these are changes, um, made at the state level and we're updating, is that correct?
These are, uh, recommended policy updates from OSBA often comes out of legislative, legislative sessions.
All right, and this is a first reading, so we're looking at it the first time and we'll vote on it next month, is that correct?
Second reading.
This is the second, okay. That's why it looks familiar.
I move that we, uh, accept the electronic communication systems updates, policy updates.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, I call a vote, uh, all in favor, Mark?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
Jackie?
Aye.
Tiana says aye, motion carries four to zero. Ah, personnel information, I think that's you, Gary.
Actually, it's just, we just need to approve the hiring of those three people.
Yep, just list them off there, nine, eight.
Oh, I, okay. You want me to read them aloud to the record?
On the agenda, it's up to you.
Okay, um, so that requires board action. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the hiring of the three individuals as written on the agenda.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, um, any discussion? All right, hearing none, I call a vote, all in favor, Mark?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
Jackie?
Aye.
Tiana says aye, motion carries four to zero. We have a non-licensed personnel report.
And nothing you need to, need to do there, just informative.
All right, that's what I thought. Uh, moving on to the next item.
Next item is late items or closing items, and I do have a couple.
Okay.
Uh, one, you know, you, you approved that second reading of policy IABGA. In the last, uh, it was a week or two ago, OSBA released their new packet of board policies and there was 46, I think, updates. And, which is like the biggest I've ever seen. So that's going to take us some time. We're going to get those printed off over the next few weeks, start kind of, you know, handpicking what's the most important ones we need to get. But this is going to be, um, policy readings are going to be inundating board meetings for the next several months. So just to get you aware.
Oh, goodie. Okay, you said you have two things. I can hardly wait to hear the second.
Then the second thing is, uh, we have, um, I just got the information today, but I just wanted to go ahead and mark it off the list. Two co-ops being requested for athletics at Elmira High School. If you recall, a co-op is when another school might not have enough students, usually they're a smaller school than us, to, um, offer a sport. And, uh, they want to co-op with us. And so we have two such requests. One is for wrestling and one is for softball. The one for wrestling is with Crowe. Uh, we had a co-op with them last year, but it was just for one year. And the co-op for softball is with Mapleton. Uh, we've never had one with them before. Typically with these, um, you know, we get the requests from the other district. It does have to be board action. And then there's a form on the OSA site that I'll fill out with the date of the board meeting that it was approved. Typically, we really just leave this up to the head coach. Um, so Brittany, our athletic director, has communicated with both head coaches about the requests from Crowe for wrestling and Mapleton softball. They're both, um, uh, in support of approving, proving the co-ops. So I need a motion, uh, to, if there's no questions, to approve the co-ops, uh, with Crowe and Mapleton for wrestling and softball respectively.
How did it go last year? It's something we do regularly and it usually works out just fine, right?
Haven't had, uh, yeah, we've done this with baseball, we've done it with softball, we've done it with wrestling. Uh, we haven't had a situation yet that's been a problem and, and like I said, the, the head coaches are in support of it, so I'm in support of it.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, softball and wrestling co-op as proposed.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, uh, any discussion? Hearing none, I will call a vote, all in favor, Mark?
Aye.
Jackie?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
Tiana says aye, motion carries four to zero. Anything else? Gary, any other? No? All right, uh, then, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.